Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to thank all of you who have joined us. Tonight is our first town hall and the idea behind these is just to provide our parents and our community and our staff as well that falls within that, the opportunity to be able to ask questions if you have any. And so we come tonight without any agenda. We actually don't have any questions in mind. And so before we get started though, I'd like to do some introductions. I'd like to introduce my executive cabinet that works closely with me and supports me more than you'll ever know behind the scenes. We have Rami Cronin-Mack who is our Executive Director of Educational Services. Also Executive Director of Education Services is Melissa Rains. We have Jeannie Dwyer who is our Executive Director of Special Services and her Assistant Director Wendy Yankowski. We have Executive Director of Grants Assessment and Accountability, Mr. Brian Frazier. And Executive Director of Human Resources, Mr. Joe Girdner. And so as I talked about, we have no agenda tonight. We're simply here to answer any questions that you may have. We can do this in two formats. You can raise your hand and we can call on you. If you'd rather not hear your lovely voice on the, over the airwaves, you can also submit questions via chat and we will monitor that as well. And so I don't see your screen, but I believe there is the opportunity for all of our participants to raise their hand. And then I will, I think I am the control here tonight, which might not be the best thing for you, that I have to remember to check the chat room. But I will call on you to ask questions. So we have a, well, somebody faked us out with a fake hand and quickly pulled it down. So we're open up for any questions you may have. All right, Monica, let me allow you to talk. You're good, Monica.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear us?
I can, thank you. So I have a sophomore at Douglas High School. And classroom learning, she's great. She does fine, no problems, has no issues whatsoever. The distance learning, she struggles every day. It's just not her thing. It's not, and she is, she's failing many classes, not just one, not just two, four. And it's a struggle for us. You know, my husband and I both work full-time. And it's, it's difficult. And while I know that there is some responsibility from the student and the parent to put in as much effort as possible to, for them to do a good job and for them to do quality work. It's difficult to get her to focus. She's just not a distance learner. We struggled with this at the end of the last, the last school year. And thank God it was just a pass or fail because if there were grades that were going to have to be in that, she would have made it. So I just wanted to express my frustration and my concerns. And I really want full-time school back. I really do. So that's all I have to say.
Monica, I can tell you that everyone on this screen that you're looking at believes that in-person learning is, is best for kids. And I think that all of us share your concerns. I don't think you're alone as a parent. That, you know, and I can, again, I may be superintendent, but I'm also a father of three kids and certainly understand the challenges of the distance learning. And so, you know, as soon as we can, that will be our desire as well. And so, you know, I would encourage you, we have parent-teacher conferences coming up October 2nd. I'd really encourage you to ensure that you meet with those teachers, especially in those classes where your child is struggling and hopefully be able to come up with some strategies that will help her.
Now, in defense of her teachers and with her, and with her counselor, I've been in communication with her counselor and her teachers. And God love the Douglas High School teachers because they are amazing. So we have a plan in place to get her caught up and to kind of use some tools and to try and get things to where she can be successful. But at the end of the day, when we're both in tears, it's, we're done. You know, it's time to be done and we've recognized that and her grades are what they are at this point. But the teachers are doing an amazing job and the counseling and support staff are doing an amazing job, you know, trying to make the best of what they've been dealt with.
A very tough situation, I agree.
Okay.
All right, all right. So I'm gonna go on, just quickly, we have a question in the chat that I think goes along with this. Is there any forecast on going back full-time for all students? And I think, you know, one of the things that we really face here is we're still under the restrictions that we were under the same, nothing has really changed since we opened school. And so, you know, and I don't say this, that, please don't hear me saying that we're gonna open our middle schools up full. You know, I've asked our principals to look at that. You know, our middle schools are under a three-foot spacing, which, which is more viable, where we will always struggle at the high school because we're under a six-foot physical distancing. And that just simply limits how many kids we can have in a, in a classroom. And so, you know, we obviously lost a lot of students out of our physical buildings to Douglas, Nevada, online. But as a district, we're, you know, we're having to manage that as well. And so, you know, let's say we were able to, to bring our middle school back full-time. And I don't, you know, I don't know, I don't think that's possible, but we've asked them to at least look at it. But then, you know, one of our fears is coming back to a full in-person and then at semester, we get an influx of students back. And then what does that do? Then that may force us back out to a hybrid model. And so we're constantly just looking at those numbers and they present, definitely present different challenges for us. So in terms of a timeline, I don't have, I don't have a timeline. And I think that's, you know, one of the challenges that we face, we're kind of in a, you know, we're kind of in a limbo where the phase system went away, but there's not a lot of clarity on, you know, what would facilitate some loosening of the restrictions. And, you know, I certainly think our, our numbers speak for themselves. I know people philosophically are all over the map on face coverings. And I will knock on wood when I say this, but I think that that has certainly benefited us. And the fact that we have not had a case spread yet through the district itself is, speaks volumes to that precaution that helps us minimize risk. And team, if any of you have anything to add, you just jump in right behind me. So I'm gonna go to MG.
Yes, I had a question about how attendance has been marked for the high school on distance days. Is there anything that can be done about not having to have the kids check in every hour to their classes? Could they check in at the beginning of the day and mark that they've checked and done the work in all their classes? But as a parent, it's really frustrating to have the deadline every, completely through the day. My kids get up in the morning, they get on, they do all their homework. And sometimes they're done by noon, but yet we're like held hostage to this check-in every hour.
So I'll have Brian add in on this after I take a stab at your question. And I think that, again, we, we understand, but we are moving forward. And I guess the thing that, first thing I would say is that, you know, we really wanna get out of this concept that they're in school one day and they're out of school the next. And I think it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna evolve. And we've asked a lot of our teachers, what our vision is as a school district is that, that we are able to train our teachers through Epic Learning and to be able to, to have a, to have a purpose for your child to be there six period. That where we're trying to go as a district, number one is what we call synchronous instruction. So those, those kids that are home on distance learning are being brought into the classroom with the kids who are there in person. And so, and so we have to maintain a schedule for doing that. You know, one of the things, and maybe we haven't communicated this out well enough, is, is in the spring, all the state asked us to do is to be able to verify that we had made, we had attempted contact with students two times a week. The state has completely changed their attendance requirements of us. They've pretty much gone back to normal that we have to, we have to either take attendance or to be able to prove that kids were participants in the class during the period. And so there's not a scenario in there that allows our kids to be able to check in in the morning and then not, not have to be engaged the rest of the day. And I'll, Brian, if you maybe wanna come in here at this point and just maybe talk a little bit about, Brian handles our attendance with the school district. If you wanna fill in any blanks that I have left there.
It really is. It's a blend of both attendance and instruction. And so from an attendance standpoint, we ask the students to be active participants. But we realize too that the instruction component of that is still a work in progress. Where we're, we're making sure, as Keith was saying, that we're actively engaging the students during that period of time. So like at Douglas High, if it was a two-four-six day, that they were actively engaged during periods two, periods four, period six. Or on the elementary, for example, on a, on a, we'll call it a smoke day or an inclement weather day, that they would be actively engaged during those particular timeframes. So we ask the students to do their part by checking in each period or in the, in the case of an elementary student during distance learning days, to check in during that, that span of time. And then we are working as, as educators, we're working to make sure that we're engaging the students actively during that timeframe. As Keith's saying, it's a work in progress, but we're, we're making sure that there are the accountabilities there and that we're providing instruction and instruction is incurred, is occurring on those days.
And I think the other thing, you know, it is, it definitely is a work in progress. And as most of you know, there's been some modifications in that. And so, you know, we've asked our schools, I think the thing that is probably the most frustrating, and again, I can, I'll speak on behalf of my wife on this one, is that, you know, our kids have missed periods. They, they've been engaged and you haven't checked in. And we get the call at the end of the night and I think that that's the source of frustration for a lot of people. And so we really trying to work with our schools and given clear guidance that those are not gonna turn into truancies. And, you know, a lot of our schools are going to turn off the auto dialer. So you're not getting those calls for the one or the two missed check-ins. And really looking at it from a more broader sense of if there's, you know, several non-check-ins during the day, then we really have to ask the question, are they really engaged in their learning? And so we're trying to adapt as we go. It's, it's, it's difficult. We hear you. It's challenging. I hear, you know, again, there's Carson and Lion, maybe only make them check in one day, once a day. There's, it goes back to that participation and everyone has their, you know, their curriculum set up differently, their structure set up differently. Something is having to happen and it may be at the teacher level. But it's also a lot of work for our teachers to be, when they have to document the, that they're engaged, they have, that they've had that contact, then they're having to surf through emails and somehow, some way, kids are having to communicate with their teacher on a daily basis.
Okay, thank you.
Tricia, we'll go to you.
Hi. My question is also with the high school. My, our thought was, when this school year started, was that half the students on their like cohort two day or cohort one day, whenever they're out of school, their distance learning day, that it would be more of like a Google meets where they would still be able to participate in the class of that day. But instead they're now having, you know, the, the teacher is having to repeat the class every, every, every two days. So is there any thought process of that happening? The, like a Google, Google meeting happening for the, within the classrooms? So that the teachers don't have to repeat a day? And I just feel like the education that my daughter's receiving isn't as, as well as it could be due to the repeat in the day's schedule. So, I mean, the teachers are doing awesome. I'm not putting the teachers down. It's just, I'm just trying to look for a little bit more.
And I think, again, I think that's, that's our vision of where we're wanting to go. And we certainly have pockets. We have pockets of that happening. You know, I, I know there are teachers that start every day with fifteen to twenty-minute Google meet. And then the kids on distance learning then can go and work. And so again, we're, we're training. We've got two upcoming PD days. And one of our focuses on those PD days is really to be able to show our teachers in term, and, and I want you to be clear, some of our teachers have had more training. We started Epic Learning two years ago and we have an accelerated cohort that has more training than a lot of our teachers have. And what this epidemic or pandemic has done is really forced us to kind of throw our teachers into this headfirst and, and we're adjusting on the fly. But that's certainly, what you're describing is certainly the vision that we have for education in, in Douglas County. And it's, it takes time. I mean, you've got a group of kids in, in your classroom. And again, what we were hoping in some of our upcoming training is to be able to show visually what that looks like. And I think you're going to see progress over the course of the year. Rami, do you wanna add anything to that?
Not, well, what I was gonna say is, I agree with Keith. We do have, we just actually spent this afternoon talking about more training that's upcoming for teachers. And we'll be promoting that more, giving them opportunities to see what it looks like in other classrooms where that is occurring, where we're getting both the, the, what we call asynchronous instruction, which is the work, those things that kids can do independently, as well as the synchronous instruction. And that's when there's teacher-led instruction through Google Meet. So we're, we do know that we have lots of teachers that are doing it, but not everybody's doing it consistently. And so we're working to build that efficacy with our teachers so that they feel strong and comfortable in that and can make sure that your children are getting the best education.
Thank you so much. I do appreciate all the teachers, all the teachers are doing. And I understand that it's a new instance and, you know, I appreciate them and thank you guys too.
Yep, and we want, we want you to know, we did not take your comment at all negative as, against teachers. So we appreciate that. All right. If you've asked a question and you don't have another one, if I could ask you to lower your hands or maybe that is something I'm supposed to do, let's see here real quick. I have to do that. I apologize. This is what happens when they give me the key to the car. Okay, so Gina asked, with the smoke in the hall a day, cohort two has had more distance learning. And that, that is true. I, I know that for a fact as my children on cohort two. So you know the superintendent's not being biased when he calls those days. They just happened to have fallen on that. It's just really, there's so much behind the scenes and there's so much infrastructure in our student information system that once we set that calendar, you know, we, we don't go back and forth. You can imagine the confusion we create. I can create enough confusion on my own with auto dialers. And you can imagine the confusion that would create if we were moving those. And so I would probably tell you that cohort one has probably had more, had more days fall on the early out days. And so, you know, we're, we're hoping that we're not dealing with smoke anymore and that we can move forward and follow the calendar as it is.
Keith, there's a couple of questions up above in the chat. Would you like to read them?
Yep, go ahead and ask them. Go ahead and ask them, Joe.
Do we need to call if there's less than three classes marked absent? Every single distant day, at least one class didn't register has checked in for my son at CVMS. I feel so bad for Stacy every other day, having to email or call over one class. I'm not sure if it's IC or the fact that we are in the boonies with satellite internet that's causing it.
We're gonna let our attendance guy answer this.
Again, it goes back to, we, we want the students to be checking in each, each period or each, for the secondary, each period that they're, they're supposed to be in attendance. It, we do acknowledge that there, there is some, there is our pockets of sketchy internet connections periodically throughout our valley. Our IT folks are certainly working on making sure that those who do not have a solid connection have, have, try to work with them on that to see if they can't get the, the connection to be a little bit better, provide them with some opportunities for those who don't, don't have that. But we want them to be checking in each period. I'm not sure where the three, the three classes marked, it should be each, each period. And then going back to what Keith was saying earlier, is that the sites have some latitude in identifying, gee, you know, Jimmy missed one period and that, and he typically just logs in all the time. And, and not making sure that you don't get the auto dialer for that and trying to resolve that component of things. And he's showing up every day on the in-person components versus Johnny, who, who really doesn't log in at all. That might be a different issue altogether. So yes, please make sure that they're, they're, just like you would if, if it was all in-person attendance, that you're documenting down or acknowledging that the student either missed that period so that they, they're either tardy and/or they were legitimately absent. You know, maybe the student was sick that day at home and wasn't able to participate. And we want you to call in to be able to clear that.
Then we have a question. I'm struggling with my seventh grader who is on an IEP and couldn't cope with the transition of in-person to distance learning and was forced to go to in-line school and is now failing due to lack of communication and instruction on the online program itself. I understand this is just what we are faced with in this crisis, but the kids are suffering. You know, and I, you know, I think we will always be open when, you know, I don't think Douglas, Nevada, Online got off to the start that we had hoped for. I think we're working hard to, to be better communicators to, and I think, you know, we, we've said this and, and it is factual that it's true. We never in our wild dreams imagined that we would suddenly be creating the second largest school in Douglas County School District with our online school. And it wasn't seamless on the backend of getting it set up. Nine hundred kids itself was difficult. Edgenuity is, is in school districts all across the country. And I think that the volume of the new school districts coming because of what we face today made that even more challenging. You know, especially for a student on an IEP, I would, I would really encourage you to reach out to their zone school and to have a conversation. Because we are quite frankly concerned. We're concerned about our students that have challenges in their learning anyways, for whatever reason. And, and whether or not Edgenuity or Douglas, Nevada, Online is a good fit. And so, you know, we've had the same conversations with our sites. We're encouraging them to reach out to families where kids are struggling and to have a conversation. If, you know, if there are, if there's any way to bring him back into in-person, him or her, learning. So again, I think, I can't encourage you enough to reach out to the, to even the zone school and start having that dialogue with them.
Here's a question. I'm new to this concept. So we will be taking our holidays and regular days off for DNO students as those physically attending school. If the answer is yes, where can I go to view the scheduled days off?
Yes, I believe that there is just one days difference. And I wanna say it's October for DNO. I think it's the October 2nd date. Find that calendar here. The calendars are on the district website. I'll post, I'll go into the chat and kind of put a path in there for you in a minute. Yeah, October 2nd is, is an instructional day for DNO. We had to do that to balance the calendar out across the year. As I recall though, all of the rest of the days match or mirror the secondary Valley calendar. So both the DHS calendar and the CVMS Pawaloo Aspire calendar. So all the rest of the days other than October 2nd, October 2nd is a parent-teacher conference day for the other Valley secondaries and elementary. But for DNO, it'll be an in-person attendance. Moving forward, that calendar, the DNO calendar won't be different than the other schools. Both this year and then in future years, we'll make sure that that's a consistent. It was just part of the, of the startup challenges that we had is to make sure that we had an appropriate number of days and we're making them go longer into the, into June to make up for it. So I'll, I'll put the path in where that, where that's located on the district website.
And then just a quick follow-up, the reason for that October 2nd date is, as a result, we had to delay the start of the DNO school year, those two days at the beginning of the year.
There's another question, Brian, that's kind of right up your alley. What standard tests will be given to students this year? Standardized test, state test?
At this point, the guidance or the directions that we've received from the state are that everything that we've had in the past is still planned for moving forward. I think it's, I think we're just kind of choosing to wait and see. And if, as things, you know, move ahead, if we're able to have students in and what that looks like, we'll get more of that information out. But the schedule, the testing schedule that we've had from the state, again, up on the website, is the same assessments during the appropriate windows as they've been scheduled in the past. So as that changes, we'll certainly let both the sites and the parents know as things go.
Okay, the next question is, my ninth grader has not had regular communication with any teachers on DNO. He seems to be doing okay and is on track, but I'm afraid we're missing something or when everything gets graded, he may see a drop. Should we be taking additional steps?
No, what you see in Edgenuity should, if it's, if he's doing okay, it reflects the grade that he will receive. So you won't see a drop in that. I am concerned that you're not getting communication. But I know that Mr. Ward and Mr. Escaville and Mr. Ryan, who are working really hard behind the scenes as administrators in DNO, are putting in some pieces to sort of, I guess, fix part of those problems. One of the things that they're planning for, at least beginning in January, is to provide a homeroom for every student so that there's a regular teacher that they are assigned to and they check in regularly with that person. So that person can then help them get their additional answers. And so that'll be coming and hopefully that will be helpful in creating that better streamlined communication with those teachers.
And Rami, I'm gonna ask you, if you'd put the phone number to DNO in the chat, I would encourage, if you do have concerns, to reach out to DNO just to, again, communicate and make sure that what you believe is actually the reality of it, so.
And there's a question here asking if we're planning to have a town hall specifically for DNO. And, and the question is, this meeting seems more for schools or in-person. And that is not the case. We'll take all DNO questions at this time. The question above that is, is Douglas Online going to get more teachers, especially at the elementary level?
We just finalized an additional teacher today, so you should see that happening. That will help, I think, a lot with our elementaries. So we'll now have one teacher assigned to each grade level. Ms. Alona Ba will be joining us in fourth grade. She was officially assigned today to that, that duty within Edgenuity. And those of you who have fourth graders should now see her as the course, as the teacher of all of the fourth grade courses.
There's another DNO. Why is the workload for DNO students more than what we had with in-person? We like that the curriculum is challenging and the content is great, but the amount of work and pace is ridiculous. And we are among the few families who are actually caught up and ahead of, in most modules.
It's a very rigorous curriculum. It's an online curriculum. And so for children who are, families who expected to have something similar to what we had in the spring, it, I'm sure it's quite a shock because it is, there is a lot of content, but it does cover the standards in it. And many of the assignments, and it's not perfect because it's online, but many of the assignments are very rigorous and aligned with those standards that students need to have in the core content areas. And so we are familiar with the fact that it is very rigorous. We've been working behind the scenes to do some work, especially in our electives, just to take some of the pressure off of our students to either, we're assessing the assignments to determine whether or not they're quality and with, whether or not we should be using them. And we're looking also just at the content overall. So we, we are working on that and Edgenuity. And Edgenuity, we first used it in summer school this summer and had a chance to take a peek at some of the core content, but not all of it. And we're working with all of it. We're seeing that there are some places that we're trying to make those revisions and in only making revisions that we think will benefit kids. So we we hear you. We know it's rigorous. We're working to do what we can to lessen that load to the best of our ability without sacrificing what we think is important in terms of rigor.
Is there consideration to having the high schoolers attend all classes on their in-person days as opposed to having A B days? The length of time between face-to-face interaction with teachers makes it difficult to stay connected and understand some material, particularly in honors and upper-level classes.
Joe, do you want to answer this as a former Douglas High School principal, what the challenges are?
I I will answer it to the best my ability. At this time, there is no change to go to an everyday model for all classes. Our original intent when we looked at that was to minimize kids' transition from classes because it is our big biggest and busiest school. So we wanted to minimize transitions throughout the day. I will tell you, I do have a high schooler and and the in-person is much better, obviously, than the distance. And the teachers are working really hard to make that experience the best that they can for students. But believe me, we understand that the distance day is more challenging for teachers and students. I think Keith, word to the, one more message here. Referencing the D N O curriculum, how long of a time window does a D N O student have to complete a day's assignment? If they're unable to finish a day's assignment, are they penalized for failing to finish?
So that question is more complicated than it first appears because I need to know what grade level. So I'll just speak to both. If your if your child is a K five student in D N O, the teachers have a lot of control over making some of those decisions about whether or not an assignment has to be completed. And so I would encourage you to ask ask that question of that, those specific teachers if you have a K five student. If you're a six twelve student, that particular part of Edgenuity is really built around time. And so it does estimate approximately how much time every day your child should be online and working in that curriculum. But there's no real penalty until you get to the end and you don't finish, right? Like, so they could make up that work the next day or, you know, maybe work into the weekends. Some for the families who really like the online curriculum, I think one of the things they like about is that does provide a lot of flexibility with regards to when students work. And so the only requirement is just that they get through the content. And so it doesn't, it doesn't penalize them at the secondary level. It just means that they're not getting through it and it gives them a pacing guide. And so I know that I've heard from some families that it's kind of hard on kids. They don't like being behind. And I I am understanding that. And like I said previously, in the other question, we're working to reduce content where we feel like it's appropriate and will benefit students. And so we continue to analyze that. I'm doing it every day on different classes and and new classes come to my attention and we're looking at them. So we're working hard to make those changes to benefit kids.
We have a shout out for Ms. Caven McCubbin has done an excellent job at D N O. Thank you for that. Keith, I don't see any more questions in the chat line. Is there anyone?
Kathy Davis, I'm not allowed Kathy Davis. She's raised her hand to talk. Kathy, you're on.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to follow up. I actually asked the question in the chat about the high schoolers being able to attend all classes versus having the A and B days. And thank you very much for the response. I just wanted to follow up and make sure, though, that we understood each other. I was wondering if on their in-person days, you know, obviously every other day, if they could go to all classes shortened as opposed to going to an A day and then going a couple of days later to B day, and then they don't see their A teacher again, you know, for for four days. And and so I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure you you understood what I was getting at there in your response.
I I did, and I probably didn't explain very well that the thinking originally was, Kathy, that because we still have about six to seven hundred kids in the building a day, we wanted to limit their transition. So they moved three times now rather than six times from class to class.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Sorry if I was confusing.
Oh, no, it's fine.
So I would like to thank your transparency, the communication on COVID cases and the clarification that they seem to be transmitted outside of the school. It is very helpful to understand the two hundred threshold for calling a smoke day. The town halls, the town hall is also great. Please keep up the great communication. There is a survey from a school board member being circulated specifically. There is a question about middle and high school students getting live instruction during their at-home days. Is this an expectation?
I'm not sure what the purpose of the survey is, frankly, but I think this goes back to the live instruction question on that. And again, I think that's where we're, it goes back to, you know, whether we use Google Meets or or what. I think that obviously that is our goal, is that 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 students that are in distance learning can be brought into the classroom and not necessarily the whole period. But if there's if there's classroom instruction going, the kids that are at home can view that instruction and then go out and and do their work. So again, it's ultimately our goal. But, you know, just like in every organization, we have, we have people at different comfort levels and we have to we understand that, we have to accept that and to understand that this is a growing process that will take some time in that. So hopefully I answered that question.
Okay, why do we have, why do we have to do I E Ps and parent teacher conferences through Google Meets? There is not fifty people in the meeting.
So and this isn't necessarily a blanket. There may be situations where we have to have in-face meetings. I think ultimately are, to minimize risk in our schools, we are, we are really trying to limit people from the outside of coming into our school. And I think, you know, again, it's been pretty effective. But there will be situations where where we have to have face-to-face meetings, but to the degree possible. And our parent teacher conferences will be the same way. The virtual meetings allow us to reduce the number of people that are entering our schools.
My children are attending D N O ninth and sixth grade and got off to a late start due to technical difficulties. They are behind and continuing to struggle. If their grades are low going into next semester, will this affect their placement or overall GPA? And will it, and will they be, and will it affect being able to participate in sports?
Well, yeah, the curriculum or D N O is considered a school. And so the grades that are earned while in the semester in that school will roll into the overall GPA, which could ultimately affect other things, sometimes placement, sometimes participation in sports, GPA. So it is important that you reach out to either the teachers or to Mr. Ward or Mr. Escavell so that they know that you you had some of these difficulties. There are some adjustments that can be made internally to the program. And so we need to, do need to look at that if that's a problem, but I would encourage you to reach out to them. I put the phone number in the chat a little bit ago, and I think that they're probably the ones to best handle the question in terms of making sure that your students get the support that they need.
We have a shout out to the Lake Schools. I want to share that I think the Lake Schools teachers and admin are doing well. They're communicating clearly and creating good assignments. I appreciate that my daughter has a chance to connect with her teachers and friends. Have another, thank you for that, Lisa Kay. I want to thank, next, there's another chat here. Thanks to everyone. Great communication. We are super appreciative of that. In a very difficult situation, teachers and staff are really doing great. Looking forward to D N O involving. I have one in D N O and one at C V M S. Thank you for all the positive comments in the chat line, everyone. One more question here. Sorry, I'm struggling with my mouse. My concern is that we are going too fast for our students to master and that they are just being exposed to material. Should have read less than eighteen weeks. I'm not sure if that relates to D N O or not.
I think that might be a D N O question. There's been some concern expressed about the elementary Edgenuity being an eighteen-week program. And so we have given teachers permission to reduce that content so that it does match the amount of time that we have in the semester. And so you should be not worried about that. That will be taken care of on the teacher end. They'll be able to make those decisions for those kids in the K five elementary. So we do know that there are eighteen modules and they won't be able to complete all eighteen.
There's a great question that just popped up. It's something that we've been talking about. And the question is, are the kids going to be addressed if wanting to come back next semester?
You mean assessed, I think. The the question asks about being assessed, the comeback. Will they be assessed if they want to go from D N O back to to brick and mortar? I think there will be opportunities for assessment, but we're looking to being able to do some of the assessments online, D N O, so that there wouldn't have to be that transition to go back. And we will be communicating out to families probably beginning the end of November about how they'll be able to make those decisions to transfer back if that's what they're what they're deciding and to communicate that to us. But we're not going to expect an assessment to say that you can go back. If that's the question, we're not going to say you have to, you know, take a D R A and score at a certain level for your child to go back into third grade. We won't do that.
Sorry, I struggle with reading. I apologize. Thanks, Rami. We would like to put our, and this is what I thought the last question was. We would like to put our kids back in school after the semester if all goes well, but there doesn't seem to be a transition plan in place for this. The online appears faster paced and covering a lot more. So what is the plan for returning and ensuring the kids are not prepared or not repeating work and not being challenged? So what's the plan for returning kids to brick and mortar is the question.
And like I said, we're working on that plan and we'll communicate that out. Families, as we get a little bit further into the semester so that you can make some decisions, we will do our best to make sure that whatever school there brings your child in, whether it's, you know, K five or six twelve has an idea of what content was covered. So there are alternatives to any content that might have already been covered.
The next question is, how many COVID cases have there been in the last week? Why have you stopped doing press releases?
I haven't stopped doing press releases at all. I've done a press release for every positive COVID case that we've had. If you're not hearing from me, that's good news. And so I believe I reported our cases from the weekend on Monday of this week. We have not been notified of any additional cases that involve Douglas County School District students this week. So we've had a little bit of a trend of getting some on Fridays, but having quiet weeks here for a while. So we'll knock on wood and hope that continues. So I think we have very few. I think we're around four or five that are actually active cases. I think we've had around twelve, thirteen total cases. And the question was, what, did we require people to quarantine that went to? I assume they're talking about the rally and and we wouldn't have a right to do that as employers. I understand a school district that is up the road from us did that. Again, we we believe our system, you know, watching for symptoms and we'll see how that evolves. But so far, we're doing good.
Your next question, I'm concerned my junior and senior are not getting through all the material in physics and trig calc because of the hybrid model. How will I know if they were going to have the education they need in those classes to move on to U N R? I can answer this and tell you that our teachers are working diligently to ensure that all the curriculum is covered. And it is a challenge that they are facing and they're working really hard to overcome that challenge and and cover all of the curriculum in all of those classes.
Okay, Mr. Gerner, I think M G has another question. I'm gonna unmute. Whoops. I'm playing tag. Just a sec here. Operator error. Okay. M G, you can talk now.
Okay, I had a question about the D N O for high school. If a student at Douglas is needing to make up a credit, is that an option for maybe summer school to take a credit through D N O?
I have a hard time unmuting. Yeah, those are an excellent excellent question. So one of the advantages of us, advantages of purchasing Edgenuity for our school district is that it does provide for a lot of remediation opportunities in in different ways. We do have a couple of of courses being offered at Douglas High School. Actually, more diverse offerings at George Wattel High School. And we did use this last year for summer school. So yes, it will be an option for remediation, both through Douglas Nevada Online, but also our regular brick and mortar schools are taking advantage of the curriculum to provide those additional remediation opportunities for kids who might be credit deficient. Or in the case of George Wattel High School, we're able to offer some curriculum up there that they don't have an instructor to teach. And so that's been really convenient for us to be able to do that as well, so that those kids, where it's a much smaller school, can still have access to a variety of opportunities.
Well, and is it still okay if they don't necessarily need additional credits, but they want to fill their, they want to fill their
Oh, you mean to
Well, like my son, he he wants to take upper-level classes. And originally, he was told he could take one of his P classes online, and then it turned out that you can't do that. Would Douglas Nevada Online during the summer be an option for him to pick up his P credit that he's lacking?
Maybe. You and I might need to talk about what the specific circumstances are. So we Yeah, so I don't know who told you you can't take P E credits online because there there are some options. But then if he's going to be like an N C A A athlete, there are some limitations. So we probably need to talk about your specific circumstance together and with a plan for your kid. But yeah, it it is an option for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Joe. Go ahead.
Go for it.
No, I was moving on. You got something to add.
I know that we were told we have to commit to the D N O for a whole semester before putting kids back in school. But my kids are not thriving in this model the way I thought they would. They really need to get back in a regular classroom. Is there anything we can do to get them in sooner so they do not fall behind their peers?
So I, again, I think that's, and I I, it depends on what grade level. I think, first of all, secondary, it is going to be difficult to make that transition due to seat time. At the elementary level, again, you know, I I think this also matters depending what school, possibly even what grade level. And I actually just sent a message out to our elementary principals this morning, just indicating that they could consider that on a case-by-case basis. And and part of, part of that, why it needs to be a case-by-case is that we obviously did some staffing shifts out of our elementary schools to staff D N O. And so if all of a sudden everyone comes back. Oops, I, sorry, M G. I gotta mute you. There we go. I was wondering where that was coming from. Anyways, so I think, again, it's a case-by-case basis because what we don't, what we can't have is in the middle of the semester, all of a sudden, we have all these students come back. And now we force our elementary schools into a hybrid model. And so that And so that's what was behind why we asked people to commit is that we want to stay obviously full in-person in our elementary schools. And we do have the capacity to probably take a few on. Some schools are a lot tighter than others. I can tell you the Jack's Valley is in a full in-person model is, is very full. It's one of our oldest school buildings that has some of the smallest classrooms. And then we have other schools that have bigger classrooms. So you certainly can contact the school, the principal at the school and, and have a discussion with them regarding that.
There is one.
Lisa K. Whoops, I'm, I'm unmuting Lisa K. I'm not sure if she had a question or not, but we'll give her a couple of seconds if she does. I'm having issues with this one. All right. Lisa K, if you were, if you had another question, go ahead and type it in the chat room. I'm having trouble unmuting.
Lisa does not have a question.
There it is, right there. Thank you, Lisa.
I don't believe there's any more questions in the chat box, Mr. Lewis. Oh, there's one. What happens that semester if you have more kids coming back from DNO? Could this force full-time back to hybrid? That is a great question.
And I think that's the, you know, Rami had actually mentioned something about a late November. We really are probably going to start those discussions more around mid-November to really again ask families. And it's going to have to be harder than it probably was in August to make a commitment, whether they're staying or they're coming back because just like we did at the beginning of the year, we're going to have to, we could possibly have to shift some staff back. It is definitely possible that learning models could change. You know, one of our concerns is that if all of a sudden everyone shifts back, but the governor's the emergency declaration is still in place with all the same restrictions. That's going to obviously create some challenges for us. So we don't know what that's going to look like, but again, we're going to, we're going to try to get those, get a better idea about mid-November. Because that could also require some schedule changes at the secondary level. Secondary kids that come back are going to have to be scheduled. And we simply can't wait to come back after the winter break and try to do all that work in, in one day to get everyone started. So I don't have a definitive answer for you, but there is a potential that we could go back and forth between models. Unfortunately. All right. Any, any other questions? You got a question, Mr. Gardner, moderator?
Yeah, sorry if this was already asked. When are they going to do map testing for DNO?
We're actually in the process of getting that set up. It's a different critter than what we've experienced previously. So because it'll be online. So we're, we'll be doing that hopefully over the course of the month of October. But we're, we're working through the parameters, what needs to take place, how does it look? And so on. So we'll be communicating that out, but I would basically target October up through, up till the October break, which is the last week of the month. So it might go a tad longer than that. But like I said, our, our goal is to try to get it in during the month of October. We'll see where, we'll see where it goes. It'll be our first foray into online assessments from that standpoint.
There's another question here. We're struggling with finding our homework. The learning plans are cumbersome to navigate. Can the teachers post all assignments in Google Classroom? That's something I would recommend that you reach out to the specific teachers that you're struggling with and get clarification on the learning plans. And then I think, I think see how they can support you with clarification on that.
Yeah, I would add they, your, your teachers need to know that you're having that struggle. That's really important. You know, the, the technology use is new to all of us and we're all learning all the time. Whoever knew that we'd be like so good at Zoom meetings, right? Like six months ago, but we are. And so our teachers need to know if they're, if plan is not easy to use, or if there's problems accessing the different links. Please give them that feedback so they can make sure that they're working to improve those for the, for students as well.
If we choose to go back to school in January, will there be a space for our kids in the elementary school? Will teachers be hired? Or will the kids be squeezed into current classrooms? And this is where I think Keith talked about the idea that we will have to evaluate that very carefully. And there is the potential that we even would have to go to a hybrid model if numbers were too, too drastic in the change, but there will be space and we will figure it out.
And you know, I, I will say that we would not be hiring new teachers. Our, our district was staffed on our enrollment. We're actually probably a little overstaffed just to, right now at this point. It doesn't mean that we will be in January, but you know, we've obviously lost a lot of students to homeschooling that is not Douglas Nevada online. And so it wouldn't be a matter of new teachers being hired. But it may be more again about what kind of model that, that we have. And, and the one thing I can tell you is that we have to stay within the guidelines of which we have to operate, which at the elementary level is three-foot physical distancing, face coverings. And so whatever decision we make has to fall within those guidelines. But with that being said, I mean, we will not stop anyone from that wants their children to attend, to move either direction, because there may be some that want to move the other too. And we will not stop you. We've asked people to make a commitment at semester with the, giving you the opportunity to make a decision for what's best for your family and your children in January, coming back out of there. And then we'll just make adjustments as we have to. All we ask is that when we put that information out, we start making those requests that people, you know, try to make that decision in, in mid-November, which is going to help us make, ensure that we have everything in place when we come back out of the winter break.
All elementary schools are back full-time at this point. There's a question around that. Doug tailing off the last question, will Keith or school staff be sending out notices as to how we prepare our kids for leaving the DNO program? And go back to physical school?
Yeah, we will certainly communicate. We'll communicate that out to our families in a timely basis. So I, I believe that's just asking if you'll, if you'll know when you need to do it. I came into the meeting late. Are all the Valley Elementary Schools currently full-time? Yes, they are. All of our elementaries are full in-person learning right now. And then just kind of give you an update. Our George Wattel High School at the lake is also full in-person. And then all of our other in-person schools are in hybrid, which is basically our secondary with the exception of Wattel High School. All right. Oh, there we go. Oh. Mr. Gardner, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much for all the hard work in such a unique year. Kudos to all the staff and teachers. The effort really shows and is appreciated. Thank you, Kathy. It's definitely been an adventure this year. I don't think anyone can argue that.
You know, and I, I just, I just want to say to our community that how much we appreciate the positive approach to that. And you know, I get, I get asked all the time, you know, there, there certainly doesn't matter who you are or what position you have. There are people that will make snarky comments or unhappy. I have just been overwhelmed with how positive people have been, how, how much grace you have given us. You gave it to us in the spring. I think we've gotten a lot of grace again here in the fall. And I think everyone understands that that this is not the perfect situation. None of us are selling that to you. And we're trying to do our best and we're learning new things every single day that we can do better. And I just, I appreciate our community and I appreciate all of our workers, teachers, classified employees, our administrators. This is not an easy time to be in education, to be affiliated with education. And again, that goes beyond education. It's the, it's the profession I know, but I know all of you that are with us tonight have challenges in your own jobs because of the pandemic and people are doing, they are working as hard as they have ever worked in their entire careers. And we could never express, sometimes words seem shallow, but we can never express how much we do appreciate all they're doing for our community.
I'm a little late joining and I'm just wondering if we could get a little more advanced notice on these meetings?
Yes.
I'm also attending the meeting late.
Raise my hand for responsibility.
I also attended the meeting late. I also appreciate you all. Just curious if the question has been asked. I'm sure it has as to when we speculate sending back full-time.
I, we do not speculate. I wish we could. I wish we could tell you when that is coming because we all look forward to that. Right now, we're just under the same restrictions. Nothing is changed whatsoever. We just do not even have, come close to having the capacity with six-foot physical distancing at the high school to bring all our kids back at one time.
That may be it, Mr. Lewis.
All right. We really appreciate all of you joining us. We have 71 attendees at, at the end. We've been pretty consistent on that. Again, I appreciate you join us and, and you don't need town hall meetings to ask us questions. Feel free to reach out to any of us if you do have questions. And again, we, we hope when we meet again, we have our next town hall meeting. It really is focused more for the lake. That's October 6. So those are more, that's more focused for our lake schools. That doesn't mean that you can't enter and ask a question if it's burning. And then our next one here in the valley, I think is January. And we'll see where we're at. Right now we have it scheduled for Douglas High School. I believe on January 7th, don't quote the date, but if, if we continue to stay in the conditions that we are right now, then that would move to virtual as well. So have a wonderful night. Again, thank you. We appreciate it. And thank you to all my staff for being here tonight with you. And Brian, you can define critter for Melissa after we are offline. Have a great night. Thank you.